Welcome everyone to the City of Cottonwood Heights, our work session this Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019. Excused Councilmember Reese, who is on vacation, and Councilmember Shelton, who had a personal issue he's done with this evening, so will not be here. The family issues, not the thing. So excuse those two people. But welcome everyone else. Looking at the business meeting agenda for this evening, we have in front of you, we of course have citizen comments, we have two standing monthly reports. We have our monthly financial report, and we have our UFA report. Appreciate those. We have several action items. For everyone's information, the ICO, ICO action item of the Walsh property has been pulled off because ICO has come to the staff and has proposed some additional language to be considered in how they'd like the, what is it, the below market rate rental issue be mitigated or have some questions there. And so need to give staff a time to review those proposals and then have to come back to the council, so the council has time rather than jump into that spoken place. But now, hopefully a very positive thing. We have ordinance 314, which is adopting a general plan land use map amendment for Fort Union from 2700 East up to Racquet Club Drive. Any comments on that?
Haven't had any changes on that from our...
Same as was presented at the last council meeting and at the planning commission.
Yeah. Shane, any guidance on that, or I think it's pretty straightforward?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Item 4.2, approving amendment number two to Nuro Cabrima, Sully County for the Trailhead. That's the going parking on Wasatch. They've given us, I think it's four years, four years to look at possible alternatives or determine if it's going to be there or part of a more regional concept. Item 4.3...
And that's just the extension on that, right?
Yeah. Amendment. Item 4.3, maybe probably what you're going to be talking about in today's meeting, or anyway, it's concerning MOU with the history of attorneys, Children's Justice Center, it's part of the accreditation obligation they have.
Sure. So what we do is we do juvenile interviews at the Children's Justice Center. So you bring all of the involved parties. So you have the DA's office, you have Child and Family Services, you have Guardian with items. It all depends on who's involved in the case. Brings everybody together to do one interview. So you don't have to subject the child to multiple interviews. This memorandum just formalizes that.
This is just the MOU with that organization to allow us to participate. Does this have a fiscal note type?
Does not. So, and it also, but it shows support of the council in support of that organization in the way we do business.
Great. Thank you. Item 4.4, we'll talk about that more before we go in. It's a consideration of a resolution accepted request or indemnification. If I call that maybe more in a close session before we go into the work session. 4.5, it's appointments and reappointments to the Arts Council. And Shelton's not here, but I guess names are on the, which I don't know where they are. You can look at those. Item 4.6, reappointments to the story committee, or a few names in that.
Is there anything out?
I'll look on the staff report.
Correct.
Yeah. With item 4.7, it's approving a consulting agreement with GeoStrata Engineering and Geosciences. This is to perform a detailed analysis of the city's sensitive lands and to confirm the best practices going from geogeo geological survey, I X. Those things we've talked about over the last two months, that usually can use in those things, etc.
And that's just the geological portion of that, because SLED is quite a bit broader.
Well, it's reviewing the current ordinance and bringing it in line with, is it the whole thing or just the geological portion?
I think much of GeoStrata's, much of the contract will focus on the geologic portions, but staff will look at the rest of it as well. Since it'll have to go through, we'll bring through whatever we can to...
About three years since that was approved?
Probably a little more than that, yeah.
But it was probably acceptable standard as far as current practices. Any questions on any of that? Very none. Go back to our work session and turn the time over to Matt and Brad to talk about road improvement plan going forward. Brad, you want to go up and join us?
Mayor and council, this is, we've been asked, we've received a final report with some changes that we've asked to be looked at on the final road report. And we thought we would bring this back to you to explain overall, and once again, kind of how we came to our conclusion of what we think we need to estimate as far as cost for road maintenance.
The pavement condition index.
Correct. Sorry, yes, the pavement condition index study. And we thought we would bring back, because our recommendation is different than the report as it's written. And Brad will explain a little bit, you know, more as to why our numbers are different. It has to do with, well, I'll let it go ahead from there. So he has a little presentation, I believe, and we'll go from there.
Yep.
Which one, sir?
The first one.
The first one.
So I'm sorry. Get it confined here.
Patient.
Locked up, sorry.
I apologize, looks like it was on earlier, it's not happening.
I don't know why this is happening either, sorry. You can give it just a moment.
So as you know, we've been working over the last year to develop a pavement management
plan, to develop a plan over the next five years on how we would address road maintenance within Cottonwood Heights. And so part of that process was we engaged GeoStrata and JUB to evaluate our road condition throughout the city. And in conjunction with that, we formed a resident citizens committee comprising of members of our community to identify community values and develop a plan or a mechanism where we would prioritize road infrastructure within the city and determine what roads ought to be addressed first if we had limited funds to address all roads within the city. And so we went through, established community values, prioritized roads, to determine relative importance of each road, and then we identified, now how are we going to fund these roads? And the very last step is providing recommendations to the city council based on that process. You know, and through that process, we looked at different things that were important. Road ought to be addressed first. Do we address a road that's, say, in front of a school? Or do we address a road that's on Fort Union that has a lot of, or do we address Highland Drive because we've got a high volume and people are passing through our city? Or do we address a road that maybe is in the neighborhood? What roads do we address first if we have limited funds? And so we went through a whole bunch of values. And the interesting, what came about at the end of that process was the resident citizens committee determined that one of the most important things in determining whether a road is addressed is going back and evaluating, what is the pavement condition index of the road? And develop a plan to address every road within the city within a five-year period. And what happens to each of those roads is dependent on what the PCI is. So whether we do a story, whether we do an overlay would be based on the actual condition of the road. They felt like that was the most fiscally responsible and most responsive to the community. And so we went through and developed a five-year pavement recommendation plan, which addresses every road within the city.
No, this is what we've seen in the past.
Correct. This is what we've presented previously. This includes about a million dollars' worth of maintenance and about another half a million dollars of capital.
Per year.
Per year. Works out to be about roughly about 1.7 million.
Per year.
Per year. We escalated just a little bit with a little bit of an inflation factor. And so if you look at the history of our road infrastructure, back when we incorporated, well, back in, since we've been measuring this, back in 2008, we had a PCI of approximately 78. And then this shows how much we've spent on the roads each year. And this graph, this line right here shows the PCI value. And here we are in 2019. If we spend the 1.5 to 1.7 million a year, we would have a modest increase in our PCI over that period of time. And so that's the recommendation that Matt and I are presenting to the city council. And this is based on the fact that the plan recommended 3.5 million dollars. And the 3.5 million dollars that the plan recommended included the entire roadway infrastructure. It wasn't just related to asphalt.
3.5 million for what kind of area?
Per year.
Per year.
But they're including the asphalt, they're including the curb and gutter, they're including all incidental infrastructure, curb gutter sidewalk, ADA facilities, cross gutters, inlets with the incidental store, these that are associated with that roadway infrastructure. So the 3.5 million compared to the 1.5 aren't an apple and an apple. And then second, the 3.5 million is based off theoretical model they've created, assuming that our roads would degrade to a zero by the end of four years. And we do have some roads in the city that are 35, 40 years old that have not had a lot of maintenance that are in, some aren't in very good condition, and some are in relatively good condition. And the 3.5 million would allow us to maintain a PCI of approximately 90. So Matt and I recommend 1.7 million dollars annually for maintenance. And we believe that we treat every road once every five years. We obtain funding in addition to the 1.7 million. We'll still seek funding using CATNET, Community Active Transportation Network Improvement Program, STP, CMAC legislative appropriations. We'll look for any funding source we can and do as much as we can to upgrade our infrastructure with those funds. We also have storm grain money for waterways, curb gutter repairs. We also have a 50-50 program, which helps us upgrade our ADA and our sidewalk. And so the 1.7 million, there's a lot of other things that will supplement that expenditure to address our road infrastructure. And we believe that using this as a benchmark, the 1.7 will allow the city's average roads condition to increase modestly in the next five years, and we believe that this is the most realistic and fiscally responsible approach.
So if Wasatch Front or someone else gives us to process additional capital funds, that would be on top of the 1.7, right?
That would be used, depends on the project. That would be used, you can use, if we're given, like, for instance, the quarter, the SB 277 money, we receive that, we were able to use that towards maintenance projects and offset some of our cost. So we would supplement that one point. Now, when we say 1.7, we tried to hold it at 1.5, but we, if you'll remember, there's an escalation there. We tried to estimate growth. So today's dollars versus five-year dollars, we don't, I mean, that's kind of our best guess stab at it. But then if we can get, for instance, the new bill, I believe there's a new one out that's going to be allotted, we can take that and distribute that into the maintenance offset from the general fund. So yes, that's the idea. Some of that STP money is different types of, some of, all of it's different kinds of money. We're going to, we chase the money we can use, obviously for maintenance, want to make sure we can get that. And then capital projects, some of the monies we can use for capital. And when we talk about capital, it's really a capital maintenance and the fact that we have to, similar to what we did on 2700, there's sections we had to replace completely, we had to mill and overlay sections of it, so we kind of piece that one along the way. So that's the concept.
And I would assume that, is it the last quarter of the quarter, is that what we're talking about, from the county's passing of the legislature between 515, 600,000 dollars will come to us that can be applied to this?
Correct.
And that'll can go for trails as well, but yeah.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Then in addition, the county has that 44 million drops down to eight or nine or 10 million, we can apply for pieces there in addition to our 600.
Any questions on that? I mean, there's...
You go back a couple of the...
Well, I think the big question was Shelton, too, when he was there, was how this is different from the pavement condition index study, the 3.5 to the 1.7, I think.
Which is, yeah, which is what this is. This shows a modest growth. If we went with the 3.5, that...
So this is basic, this is next budget here?
Correct.
At the full 1.7?
Correct.
Okay, and so that's where you see that take...
That's where it starts to, the growth starts to, and it's modest. If you went with the big money, big number, that jump is going to go, it's going to be a straight shot up, and then we work from that, from that area. We're looking at this more of an overall fiscally, fiscal issue. I'd love to, for you to allot me 5 million dollars a year to maintain and do this, but it doesn't, it just doesn't work. So that, now, and this also gives us the chance, over the next five years, to look at other ways to fund programs, and it keeps our value up in a good range and climbing as well.
Yeah, my concern is long as we're not kicking the can down the road for some major surprise, but if we're maintaining and progressing...
That's what we're shooting for. And then we're, the surprises, we're trying to cover in the capital projects, the reconstructions, make sure we're taking care of those.
Well, a big reconstruction project would have some effect here because you may be able to spread that out a little.
Yeah, the big reconstruction project, overall, you're not going to see a huge dump. For instance, Highland Drive is in here, and that was a very big project. But the overall, but if you took Highland Drive by itself, obviously that one went straight up to honored in that section, so.
Yeah, so that's a good point. So obviously includes the paving component, but about each year, we have two pretty substantial projects each year, rebuild or whatever that's in this to address those.
Don't we understand why 2011 is such an outlier early on?
We've got 2 million dollars for Bengal Boulevard in the legislature.
You shot us off, and immediately goes down.
That was the year that they were giving money to Suncrest, and our lobbyist said, wait a minute, Cottonwood Heights has this, too.
Why would it drop so much after that?
This is a terror, I mean, there's a, there's a bulb there, but that's not, you know...
But once again, Bengal was a big project, and in the overall scheme of the city and the miles, your average, this is a way, this is an average throughout the whole city. I mean, if it was just that, it would have given you a bigger bump, but it held steady for...
We have how many lane miles in this city?
150.
Center line, center line miles.
115 center lane?
Yeah.
Do we know what the lane miles are?
250.
Okay. Any further questions of staff on this? I know we'll be talking about it again during the budget process, this is just kind of a...
Yeah, and we'll have, if you can go back, Brad, to the map.
While you're doing that, is there any way that, because the numbers, I don't, I can't keep them straight in my mind, in terms of what the funding, how much it is, over what period of time, what we could possibly get, to sort of see just generally of that 1.7 where we think we could get money from the county or from the sales tax increase, all those things? I just love it like a cheat sheet.
I think I have one.
Because I suspect that other people might be interested in this.
Yeah, because I'm keeping it in my head, and it's, I know it's not right.
Yeah, all the acronyms are throwing me off, they're all starting to blend into one big alphabet.
Well, well, one would be CD, not Class B and C, right?
Yeah, there's B and C road, Class B road funds.
Our Class B and C is 900, or it's about a million, right?
1.2.
1.2. So 1.2 to 1.7.
That's gone down, right?
That is.
Which we talked about. What we're actually probably get, 1.3 is where it's budgeted.
Okay. So that's the first big chunk. Then what we're trying to really choose is that half million.
Then July 1st, the last quarter of the quarter, which is that additional 600, which we kind of hopefully we're going to get now, we know is going to happen, that's about 600,000?
Well, that puts us, that puts us really close to that of the 1.7.
Yeah.
For maintenance, because that's maintenance usable.
Well, not all of the B funds, right, go to this?
What's that?
Not all of the Class B funds go to this. It's dispersed throughout the whole maintenance.
There's some other, there's other...
Correct, yeah.
It can go to...
But we have, we have a list of that with some proposed funding sources that we'll get to Tim and Scott, and we'll distribute them out.
Through the budget committee, too, one of the, I understand, with, pushing the mic around, that that committee will have agenda, they'll look at all the revenue sources, not just for roads, but for everything, looking at kind of historical perspective as well as projections. That'd be a great cheat sheet on all revenue sources, because that's a part of the budget process.
So on this, I just wanted to bring this back real quick to the five-year. This is just a schematic graph of where those projects are proposed, and as we get closer to each one of them, we'll, you know, bring forward the, those actual roads, so you have a better idea of it. You can see it's a five-year plan, it bounces around and hits everything, and then we work, next year we'll start another rotation and have a new five-year with a, as it just keeps, it just continues. I mean, it's a continual process.
Is this chip seal piece of this, is that...
Yeah, chip seals are part of this, slurry seal, could be level coursing courses, there's just a myriad of maintenance options.
When we're going to do something.
Yes.
And the something could be...
And we're estimating a high-end maintenance on it as well. I mean, it could be a simple seal coat, we don't, I mean, but we're estimating a heavy slurry on all of it at this point.
All right, any further questions?
I guess on that five-year plan, does that let you catch reading things like fog seal that you're supposed to do like after a couple of years?
Yes.
Closer.
It has preparation for each year, each year, future fiscal year, and it's just kind of, we tried to encompass everything we could.
Okay, since you guys are both at the table, let's move to item B on the agenda. Wasatch Boulevard discussion with respect to engineering. That's what I'm, I'm not sure what we're talking about.
I think this is, this is, this is talking about, we have a Wasatch Boulevard master plan, draft, and...
Yeah, you had some questions, and Brad was...
And I think you had some historical information that I think would help, and then you could give us your impression on the draft and thoughts or recommendations or agreements. That was my call.
And that was, yeah, that's why we brought it back, so you can ask those questions, and Brad can walk you through some of his point of view.
Yeah. Do you want me to give you a Cliff Notes synopsis of my perception of the plan?
God, it doesn't have to be Cliff Notes. There's more background.
So the Wasatch Boulevard master plan was a fairly lengthy, comprehensive process. It involved the city staff, Wasatch Regional Council, the consultant, and so they spent quite a bit of time looking at the history of the corridor, all the existing features, all the historical background. And then, in addition, engaged the public in a process that, over a period of time, sought feedback and to understand what the community values are and goals associated with the corridor, and then developed a pretty comprehensive plan. And I look at it as kind of a lofty wish list of how we would envision Wasatch Boulevard being at some point in the future. And as, if you've seen the plan, you've looked at the draft, they've got, well, they've thought of a lot of things, and it includes a lot of the alternative transportation modes, trails, shared use pathways, connectivity into the neighborhoods, additional parking, a lot of thought's gone into how do we incorporate more parking rights associated with making people out of their cars, so we have less cars on the road and can get more people up in the canyon more efficiently, less single occupancy use. Where do we put those parking right lots? And what does the corridor look like? How do we interconnect trails together? How do we make it somewhat sensible, so we don't just have little pieces here and there? So we don't just have a little bike lane here, but then it ends, and then we have another bike lane that starts, and then it ends. And so I look at it as, that's a great template that helps us as a city communicate to UDOT, who's the owner of the road, hey, this is what the city would like, or here's some things that are values of the city moving forward. From a technical side, here's the issue I have with the plan. The plan does what the plan's supposed to do, it helps us, we now have a document that we're able to communicate some of these concepts. But the actual implementation of these concepts, UDOT owns the road, and they are the ones that are going to dictate how it's built out with our guidance in the background. And their goal ultimately is to move cars from point A to point B, and they'll say with the caveat, as safely as possible. A lot of the things that we add are expanding the corridor considerably beyond what they would typically do, if they were just, they would look at, okay, here's the ADT of the road, we've got 39,000 cars, okay, we're right now at a threshold where we can upgrade from, say, a five-lane section to a seven-lane section. And then if the community has a strong value, they may include bike lanes and maybe a little bit of a... And then if the community has a strong value, they may include bike lanes and maybe a little bit of a shoulder, adding an additional space for landscaping and a buffer between a shared use path, or having an additional path for bikes during the week, but maybe high occupancy vehicles during the weekend. I see a lot of that as being something that would be in addition to UDOT, something that we as a city would have to take a very proactive approach. And I don't see, from my experience with UDOT, that they would just fund that because that's what we like. That's something where we would have to go out and find the money from the legislature or other funding sources, and we would have to be in the driver's seat directing UDOT, in other words, I look at this document as.
It's a betterment, right? It's considered a betterment, and we get to pay for betterments.
Correct, yes.
As this is a template, this is just a start, this is just the framework, and that the monkey's on our shoulder if we wanted to implement it. And concurrently, right now, there's also the EIS study that's happening, and they're also coordinating with us on a corridor agreement for access management, which is a strong value for a corridor like Wasatch Boulevard. In order for a corridor like Wasatch Boulevard, or a bender highway, or to function well, you don't want to have a whole bunch of intermittent stops, stoplights, and access points, they'd like to consolidate them. This is UDOT's thinking, they want to move masses of cars from point A to point B, and so they would like to, especially at the gravel pit, they don't want, you know, a dozen accesses, they, in their perfect world, would just want one access, which might not work for our local needs, and so, there's two kind of competing philosophies there. You know, some of our local needs and how we're addressing our local residents and people that live in the neighborhoods, and UDOT's ultimate goal of moving cars from point A to point B.
Brad, my question is more strategically thinking, obviously, there's still a lot of questions, and we've not adopted yet. I think you should come back before us because there's been some concerns. The strategically thinking, and Mike, you sure can jump in on this and that as well, is strategically thinking, when, what's the timeframe for us to be most effective by having this thing adopted? So we can start, I don't want to say greasing away, but so we guys can start speaking the same voice and getting to UDOT and getting to the legislature, getting to whomever, you know, and get some things kind of in the groove a little bit, right now, I see it kind of floating out a little bit, I see UDOT's kind of backing off a bit, and they've extended the EIS for more information, we've kind of backed off a little bit here on ours because we had some questions. The legislature is starting to hear a lot of rumblings, so I think we can start jumping in a little bit, so there's a lot going on. If we want to be impactful, how critical is it for us to get a position quicker than later so that we can start pushing that, I know that, and also, on a side note to that, what are we doing in the interim with Wasatch Boulevard?
Just, I'm pointing to Mike, because he's been going to the EIS meetings, and he can probably fill you in a little bit on the, how those two are worked. They have a copy of this, right?
Yes, and UDOT was one of the major stakeholders in this project, we don't want to show anything on here that is impossible for UDOT to implement, so we spent a lot of time, a lot of meetings with different divisions in UDOT to make sure what's shown on the preferred scenario, what's shown in our goals and within the body of the document. You know, they may not have a role in every recommendation we're making, they may not completely agree with every recommendation from their standpoint, but are generally acceptable in them, there's nothing that's just impossible for them to implement, because we want a plan that is visionary, that does push the limits a little bit, but is also realistic and able to be achieved. What they've stated through the EIS process is if a city has a long-range plan and a vision in place, and they've got goals that overlap with goals that UDOT has, then UDOT will help as much as possible to come together with the municipality and achieve those goals together. For example, as of today, not to say this doesn't change, but as of today, the cross-section they've designed for Wasatch Boulevard does include the pedestrian pathway as a modified version of their own cross-section, so rather than park strip sidewalk on both sides, they've implemented our recommendation to include a median, they wouldn't fund the landscaping, but they would install a median as part of any project they do, as well as the shared use pathway on one side, as shown in our plan, at their cost. Any landscaping and beautification of that obviously would fall on us, but, but things like that, that's not something UDOT would do automatically, but because the city has a goal and it's within the scope of what they can achieve, then they're able to coordinate with us and help themselves.
A little challenge, I just looked at, two or three times you had commented, you said, our plan, and then you referred to our position on some of these things, but yet, there's a council that's not been adopted yet, right?
Correct.
So I, my, back to my, back to my original question, how critical is it, I'm not saying I agree or disagree about what you presented to them, but how critical is it for us to get this on the table so that those concerns among the council and constituents who have talked to us get addressed, so that once you go to them, you know this is, because right now, it's, I mean, I, I kind of know, but I don't know exactly what.
So I think it's fairly important, right now is the time where we're lining everything up. I know the EIS is extended, but that ends with funding and that ends with construction.
But isn't the EIS for the 60 million dollars on the snow shed?
There's an additional 20 million dollars that they're wrapping in as part of that, that's for improvements along Wasatch Boulevard only. And then another half a million that they're also wrapping in, that's for parking and transit.
And another billion for the two canyons, half on each.
Right, so they're wrapping it under one umbrella as the EIS, but it's technically three or four different processes that they're wrapping up into one.
So it's almost 100 million total.
But if, if our recommendation here, and Brad mentioned, this was vetted through two, through a lot of public outreach surveys and heard to UDOT as we're planning this.
I'm not saying you're not, I'm just saying that it's still something, I think, if there's the council, we need to get it on here and have a real hard, hard talk and see where we are, so that when you, if it is the case that you have, it's adopted by the council, then you can be more aggressive, more assertive, I shouldn't say that, aggressive, more assertive than pushing some things. I know that there are some questions on that, that's why I think it's been held off for a couple of months. So what I'm trying, I'm all for just pushing back on the agenda so we can get a consensus of where we are, so that when we go meet with those individuals on the side or with legislatures, we know the different components we want to push on.
Yeah, in the grand scheme of where this fits in the planning process, this is on the same shelf as the general plan. So it's a long-range, you know, advisory document that guides decision-making, guides policies that are set. It doesn't set policy, but it guides, it sets a vision, so we, we as staff, residents, the council, are all on the same page of where, where we're headed and what we're emphasizing.
Well, we conceptualize, but right now, it's.
Well, once we do that, we can start a process like our corridor preservation funds. Then we can identify maybe some spots where we have some areas that are necked down, and if we have a preferred scenario that we've decided, yeah, that's what we want to do, those are the ones that we would.
Yeah, if that preferred scenario is adopted by the council or hold, then it's going to get, it's going to make it happen. I think, I think the time is now, there's so much energy out there to deal with Wasatch Boulevard, even this weekend again. You know, it's just, it's critical, and so I'm just saying, whatever we need to do to get our piece confirmed or agreed upon, so we can.
Just one comment, kind of off, but directly related to this. Every year, we go to Wasatch Front Regional Council to get funding, remember about four years ago, we sort of forewent one of our funding opportunities, which we then got the next year, so that they would fund the EIS for Highland Drive to continue through to Draper. And so that EIS money will come due here in about another year and a half, two years. And if that segment is built, that will have a tremendous impact on Wasatch Boulevard.
In a, in a positive way, right? So that was my, that was going to be my question, so could you just back, speak to that again, I wasn't, sorry, I was following. So the, the funding is there for the EIS?
So it's the funding to study the EIS, which.
Is it between us and Sandy, who's?
And it was like four and a half million dollars, so it wasn't just a little EIS, and that's, yeah, to keep through Sandy, across Dimple Dell, and the corridor is already there, a lot of port, I mean, you look at an aerial map.
Basically make it like 13 threes to.
But the debate is Dimple Dell.
Hard hard going through the golf course and a bridge, or how do we get across Dimple Dell? But there are already five or six bridges across Dimple Dell, so that's not.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a big problem.
But yeah, that's what we say, the highest traffic, I know because of Wasatch Boulevard, we have so much drapery traffic as well, yeah. But again, I guess what I'm saying, because I'm the lady person, you're the professional, how important is it for us to do this thing adopted, so we can start pushing it on?
I think it's from the perspective, from a local perspective, because Wasatch runs through, I mean, so central through the city and affects, directly affects mainly cotton heights residents, to have that local input in this draft plan or geared around that, or preserving the character, making sure access is okay in and out of neighborhoods, there are some problems with that right now, UDOT doesn't always, or usually look at things from a local level, unless they're working with the jurisdiction that's got this vision in place, and is working with them to try to, to help them realize, hey, you've got a big impact here you're making to this one city, let's work together, we understand you have to achieve your goals of moving people through, but we've got these priorities as well, and I think we can achieve them. But that does rely on a plan being put.
But like what you said, if there's, if there's any disagreement or modification of plan, you need to know sooner than later, I think is what you just said.
Absolutely, yes, because the guidelines of this, and John Thomas and other UDOT officials, we're at a lot of these public meetings, we're kind of operating under the assumption that, that a lot of the common things that we heard and the major public sentiment is going to hold through this plan, some of the details may shift around and change a little bit. But a lot of the concerns we heard over and over again are going to remain concerns that we want to address at our level.
I just want to make sure that if I'm out there speaking, I want to speak on behalf of the city, and I want to make sure that there's consensus about what that is, and what you just said, if there's any changes. I've heard rumblings from several that they have a few concerns, and how materialally they are, I'm not sure. But I, because I'm just saying, at some point, we need to find out where we are on that thing and get it going, so that we, as we advocate for Wasatch Boulevard and advocate for implementation of this, we're ready, it's encouraged. So do you know where we are on the timeframe, and maybe bring me back?
Well, we, so we brought it for public, public comment at the council level, and that was kind of our last, our last, correct me if I'm wrong, that was our last meeting, we had, we had public input, there was some public input, there was some discussion, it was brought back to a business, or a work session to discuss some of the elements, and that's, that's where we've left it at this point, there's.
So what's the plan now as far as getting council?
Well, I, I would say, we, if you want, there's some options, we can come back for, for one more work session, unless you feel like there needs to be more to discuss any of the specifics, I know Christine, you may have some issues, Mike Shelton had some issues that he had sat down with us on, we can discuss those in a work session, vet through whatever we need to with that, and then if the council is comfortable, I think we can get it back onto a business session for adoption eventually.
Yeah, I, I bring it back to work session as soon as you're comfortable, because I think that's still a topic of so much interest and so discussions outside this group right here, I think it's very timely.
When, when you talk to UDOT at these recent meetings, I know that John told me they're looking at a sort of five or seven, five, I think, cross-section.
Because five lanes, that's what.
Five lanes.
Was made, would some of the median needs call it?
Right.
Median slash terminal lanes, yeah, where, where needed kept.
Where needed, we had similar cross-section, but we had the flex lanes.
So, yeah, so that comes from working with UDOT.
Okay, let me finish my question, yeah, and so we have, we have this idea of a flex lane where those lanes are open for buses on weekends or powder days or whatever. Where are you hearing from John about that concept, is he still, is he still feeling like, when he says five lanes, he's thinking car, he's not thinking flex lanes like we are, he's thinking car, car, median, car, car, turning lane, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I think at this point, their, their focus on the design, what the road looks like, the anatomy of the road, and we have been pushing every two weeks on thinking about the function of that road back term is, and we can widen this, and that might alleviate vehicle congestion for a little bit, but over time, that's just going to fill up again.
But, right, and we also have to think, like, our, part of our road ends up in this, right? Sandy, right, is a two-lane road, so we're going to add four lanes on each side because of G Burney? You know what I'm saying, you have all the cars coming from Sandy who drive on this. When they get to, when they get to Lakai, the turn off the high T there, then it's suddenly going to be four lanes, but yet, the road going up the canyon is still two lanes, so I guess I just think, I hope that we're pushing the flex lane concept, because I think from our community standpoint, it's helpful to have the two lanes, the flex lanes, when there's these powder days and buses, and the buses could fly by, but I think, I think if we're considering this notion of, I've got another picture for you. Something like, and this may be extreme, right? You know, like this, I mean, that's, why, why, you know, I just, I keep thinking to myself, if it's like this from Sandy, why are we then thinking about this, right, this is it really, right, and that's, that's five lanes.
That's pretty.
Yeah, one, two, turning lane, two, two, that's what we're talking about, we're going from this to the south, this to the north, and that's what our city is going to turn into.
So that picture is absolutely what we're trying to avoid with this plan.
Correct, I know you are, I guess, I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of, you're bringing up the idea of the flex lanes, are we getting any momentum, or are you still feeling like it's still a very, it's an uphill battle and?
Well, I think John's very optimistic, and he's got a good perspective, and he, he listens to a lot of opinions, and where we are right now is, how do we get more people out of single-occupant vehicles? How do we make transit a viable option? Flex lanes is our recommendation, but that's not to say we can't explore things like signal preemption, some way to prioritize transit and multi-occupant car pools, getting users out of their car into, you know, into some form of transit, and making that transit appealing, and that's where we are right now, and they're, I feel good about our progress right now, understanding we're still early on in it, but UTA's been pulled into these EIS meetings, they're aware of how we feel about this. The transit and parking study will kick off in March, and we're going to, again, be right back there with these concepts, because just widening the lanes, in my opinion, is just a short-term fix, and it's the reactive solution, but we have to think proactively.
Well, yeah, because then you, you end up like this, you end up like a Saturday powder day where it's two lanes ending down to one lane, queuing all the way onto the highway, which now you've seen, I think.
With the plan, this.
I went out there Friday with Mike.
Yeah.
And you saw the parking of the parking ride and the length of cars.
Understanding the plan is the very beginning of the process, but we're trying to avoid that picture there through a character preservation, aesthetics perspective, but we're also trying to maybe achieve something that UDOT hasn't thought about before, and try to, try to address this problem in a way that's unique to this unique area of, you know, of the city and even think about that a little differently.
Think at a time, again, my point is, and I support the dialogue this way on, is, I think it's imperative that we get this back on the agenda, where we can get these things processed, so we have consensus of where we are as a city, so that when you're meeting with them regularly, it's very clear in your mind what position the council is. And also, if we meet independently, all of us independently, with different individuals who impact this process, we are speaking the same, same tone on what we want that to look like and what our expectations are.
So could I ask for another cheat sheet?
Sure.
Could I have this cheat sheet would be?
Would you cheat sheets in college?
Study guides.
Probably, but study guides. So just something that shows the process of the EIS and then how long, you know, to that end, when this can get on the agenda and the amount of money, again, because we heard the mayor say $100 million and, you know, the $500 for parking, that, just something that...
Yeah, there's, it's broken down into one, two, three, four, five, five different pots just in that, yeah, yeah. That's out, that doesn't count what could come this next legislation.
And then that 1.7 that we're talking about for the road index, could some of that be used for the beautification if that were, if that sidewalk were built and we wanted landscaping? Is that, did you consider that? I'm sure you didn't consider that.
Consider, I'd have to come out of a different fund.
What was that, sorry?
What, we'd use one, sitting there for sidewalks.
The quarter to the quarter, we would, yeah.
The quarter to the quarter could go towards, it's trail development, isn't it?
Yeah, it has some, it has active transportation in it.
No, no, we can't hear it. You're not speaking into microphones and so the last conversation between Christine and Mike couldn't, was not caught on the mic. So if you can approach the table, you don't have to repeat it, but just be aware that you have to be closer to the microphone. Thank you.
Sorry.
The, well, no, those, those funds, it would be a decision of how you'd want to expend them. I mean, as far as, we're trying to focus on the maintenance on that, on those, on that five-year plan, so.
But also in that last quarter, like the $600,000, part of it can be used for trails and we can also make applications, the county's part of it. So I think there's mechanisms to use it, but it's still before that, let's decide clearly what we want to propose for Wasatch Boulevard and figure out a good connection.
I'm saying that this plan, time is a bit of the essence. I mean, if we do work session next time and throw that for adoption, we're successful next time in getting something where we can do at the end of February, because that's what we'll be looking at on a, on a quick thing. March, April, May, you're going to be in budget discussion, some other things in our work sessions pretty hard and, I mean, it's kind of like you need to do it now or you're going to get it kicked on until August.
No, I just think as soon as Mike's ready, let's get it back on the agenda and prepare to talk about it.
Well, I still haven't seen council member Shelton's comments. He could send those to me and then maybe I would take a turn at the red line and just see what you all think about because it'd be nice to see what he says and if we all agree with it.
And that's, that's my secret, it'd be nice to have like a live document we could go and access. One more question's getting answered. It's, it's, it's a lot harder for me to cross-reference this email and red lines and then that one with red lines and then...
We can get that and we can get the funding and the, yeah, the EIS process together as well, so.
Yeah, Jesse should have that from CWC because Carlos himself presented the detail and that whole thing broken down.
Yeah, we talked last week with Jesse, he was on.
He broke it down clearly. Two pieces of the pot are assigned to CWC here, you know, to drive the two studies. I don't know about the transportation, so, I mean, the parking piece, the $500,000.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still figuring out who's going to lead that, but that's got a mid-March kickoff timeline as well. Around the same time they bring the EIS back up.
What I found, found really interesting is where it was going Thursday or Friday, whenever, I think it was Friday, the big, there was a big powder day on Friday and the traffic going northbound was backed up to my neighborhood from 7-Eleven. So it's because people are making, coming around through the neighborhood to get, go up Big Cottonwood Canyon and make that right turn, so they're going through and coming around Smith.
I had a couple letters of residents who, yeah.
And so, I mean, it's fascinating because the, the traffic patterns are even changing. I guess it's because of ways and control maps on it. But I had never seen that before.
Yeah, now the Big Cottonwood is just...
Yeah, we're not even, I don't even feel like we're really talking about that so much as...
Well, and the other thing too is the impact of the canyon center on the traffic at that side as well. And that, that's come up too, needs to be considered. And rest, new reps on the Wasatch as well. Okay, well, just to, so that we're progressing, I just...
I guess, one question on that. So, so when you're analyzing the traffic on this hotel, I mean, there's obviously like something that breaks the camel's back, right? And this could be what breaks the camel's back in terms of traffic. Who ends up paying for any kind of improved, you know, improvements to the road or accessibility of the roads?
From a land use process perspective, the hotel's a condition of use, so with any conditional use, you can...
You can add conditions.
Add conditions based on perceived impacts created by that use alone. So a finding would need to be made that the hotel is, is making a certain impact, define that impact, and then we can require that, this is the hotel, to mitigate any of that impact. There are already existing bad conditions in that area. We can't rely on that application to fix problems that already exist. So conditions can be made to, to fix issues created by the...
So will we see that in the traffic study? Will we see sort of, we'll see, have we seen the traffic study yet or...
Yeah, Brad spoke to that at the last point.
For just the hotel itself?
You, you won't be seeing that proposal. I mean, it's, it's going, the planning commission is going to make the decisions on, on the hotel. They've seen the traffic study and there was a presentation last or two weeks ago on that.
But I think as a city, and I appreciate that and I accept that, but I think almost globally in that area, there's a bigger question, almost to the point that it's not just the hotel, it's like Prospector, not Prospector, Racket Club Drive, I mean, that's up there the night and you can't even hardly drive through it. In front of Weaver Homes, traffic for that issue, out in front of Porcupine going up Fort Union, and almost like at some point, I don't know how we can find us to consider to do a traffic study for that whole development as well as impact on the neighborhoods right there.
Yeah, and that's, that's, I'll just be quick on this. That's largely what we heard at planning commission is those concerns and a lot of comments of, of traffic conditions that are already bad. So I think they're, and they're all legitimate comments and we agree with a lot of the concerns, we just have to, you know, treat them accordingly and separate hotel-related issues with global issues there and I think...
So with global issues, is that then on the city's dime or can it be tied to anything else in there?
At this point, so we met with, with the developer, the canyon center, Chris McCann is to come up with some preliminary, just, you know, temporary solutions to just area-wide traffic issues. We have a few follow-up meetings scheduled with some residents nearby. Just a couple of separate meetings to, to talk about that exact thing and I think we need to continue to explore that, but if it's not tied to specific impact created by the hotel, then the solution would fall on the city itself. And we're hopeful we can partner with...
I would just encourage you, as you pursue that, if it does fall, let's not just keep it aside, hold the budget process, let's recognize it because this has been something that gets that used now already.
Yeah, that's the way we do it.
Right, we need, we need to move ahead if that's all right. We have a closed session, we have to deal with the full dinner at seven o'clock as well. So now we're having a little understanding regarding the Children's Justice Center. So Paul, is that yours?
I'm sorry?
Is that me or more?
Children's Justice Center. Oh, Children's Justice Center.
I was talking about that a few minutes ago.
Okay, let's just on here, Sam.
We're asking for, we're required to have an MOU, but we're asking for a council resolution and support of that as simply like what I explained before is to support that process, period. We've done it, we'll have it going forward, we just need to get the council's support and a resignation format.
Okay. Any questions with that? Explain it twice. Just reminder to the council that we have a calendar of upcoming events and we'll excuse council member Michael and councilman Bruce from our volunteer appreciation dinner this Thursday, but hopefully you'll see the rest of the council and the corporate staff there at that. Couple of things on the, we can see. Okay, with that, we have a closed session talking about, I guess it's personnel, right?
Should be litigation, I believe.
Litigation, okay. Well, yeah, it's identification, so I guess it's litigation.
So maybe we close the open session, I hope on closed sessions for purpose of discussing and preventing other...